...will come to order. Madam President, welcome.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adgusti here. Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Jacobs. Councilman Grover.
Here.
Councilman Keenan. Councilman Sidenho. Councilman Gorman.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
President Gonzalez.
Here. This is a special conference of the City Council for the purpose of discussing the proposed fiscal year 2013 municipal sewer utility and capital budgets. Notice that this special conference was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on October 10th, 2012. And a copy of this notice was sent to the Star Ledger and Home News Tribune in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Sidenho. Mr. President.
Thank you. This is the annual City Council.
No, you can do it.
This will be the annual City Council Budget Review. What we'd like to cover tonight, a couple of categories. I want to go over an overview of the budget process prior year, current year. Talk about some of the major revenues that have contributed to our surplus. Talk about appropriations. And talk about city action plans, future challenges, and then we could go into City Council recommendations. Just for the new viewers, I guess, I want to discuss the budget process. Back in April, we had a departmental meetings with the BA, Finance Director, and other appropriate directors. The objective was to justify appropriation requests, including personnel, O&amp;E, and capital. This is a thorough review of the prior year and a current year budget request. And just keep in mind, even although all the items were budgeted, appropriations are still subject to incumbents' account system. It requires several layers of approval, including Supervisors and Directors and BA as you go throughout the year. A temporary budget was introduced on July 3rd, and that's in order to fund the city operations until the budget is adopted. The 2013 budget document was introduced and approved on September 11th. And the City Council review is tonight, that's October 16th. And the anticipated planned adoption of the budget, including amendments if any, will be on November 13th. That's providing we have the Division of Local Government Services approval, which normally would happen by this time, but I think it's short of personnel and Trenton. And hopefully, we'll adapt to next week until we get the budget adopted on 13th.
The 13th?
The 13th.
Yeah, 13th, Tuesday the 13th, yeah, 3 o'clock. The current year plan, the good news is there is no tax increase for the 2012 calendar year. There is a 2% tax increase for the fiscal year, which starts July 1st through June 30th, 2013. And that's all within this tax levy cap and spending cap.
I'm sorry, sorry. Say what you say that again.
Okay, the good news is there was no increase in taxes.
For the calendar year.
For the 2012 calendar year. For the state fiscal year, which starts July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013, there is an increase of 2.1%.
I thought you said 2%, 2.1?
Yeah, yeah. It's in that neighborhood.
Okay.
And also, the good news, there is no layoffs in this budget for 2013. Now, policies that led up to...
2012, 2013.
2013 now. That's this budget.
Okay.
That's this budget. State fiscal year budget.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Sure, you can have a question.
Yes, of course. To attrition, are there any, anyone leaving for retirement and their job replacement?
I'll be getting that, but...
Oh, you're too early, won't you wait?
Well, I think that's a question. I'll give you a brief answer. We're expecting many this year, but in the next two or three years, with the contribution for the state health plans that they're going to have to make, it's a graduate. Well, we think starting next July 1st. But I'll get to that then.
Okay.
And that's some of our future action plans and items that we're going to be looking at.
Okay.
That's going to have an impact on the budget in the city. The policies that led us to this small tax increase, we're conservative revenue and appropriation budgets to avoid deficit and tax increases. The prior year surplus also benefited the current year. We had a 96% collection rate. We sold a burned property for $2 million. We had a Union County Improvement Authority retro tipping fee revenue of about $1 million that was incorporated to 2012 revenue. We had upfront collections from UEZ of about $2 million. They gave us a lump sum of $13 million out by down in accounts receivable of $2 million. And we have appropriation lapses, lower spending than anticipated of about $1 million. So that all contributed to a surplus going into 2013. The revenues, we usually budget very conservatively. And just to remind everyone, we also had increases in the hotel tax, the parking tax, and the motor vehicle rental tax. They accounted for close to $4 or $5 million. And they were all actions by City Council and the administration to charge tourists who are benefiting from our police, fire, and public works, clean streets, and that type of thing. So that was a big help over the last few years. As far as revenue, we're also considering an EMS collection system and agency. Right now, we collect about $2 million. We should be collecting a lot more. That's only about 40% of the actual revenues billed. So we're looking into that, see if we can get a professional system in here and give us some guidance. We also aggressively pursue, as usual, federal and state grants and the CDVG funding and the New Jersey Department of Transportation. As far as the appropriations, as I mentioned before, we had savings of $8 million last year, lower than the actual budget. And that's because of our incumbents' system that requires several layers of approvals. We go from the Supervisors to the Department Managers to the Directors to the BA, depending by a level of dollar amount. So we keep a pretty close control on the appropriations. And just for information purposes, as we all know, the budget's guided by 75% for salaries and fringe benefits, that includes police, fire, and public works, et cetera. And that's the bulk of our budget. The other parts of the budget are a debt service, principal and interest, that's about 6%. Reserve for uncollectible taxes, that's about 6%. And your various other departments. So the major appropriation that we do have is salaries and fringe benefit. Salaries around $90 million, close to $95 million. We have hospitalization of about $30 million. And we have pensions of about $30 million. So those are our major expenses, and they're state mandated contract. So it's kind of hard to have any control over those type of expenses, except as I'll mention going forward, we're going to anticipate a drop off in a number of employees. Some of the appropriations, cost savings programs that we had over the years have been administrative costs for off-duty police. That's bringing in a few hundred thousand a year. And that's the only time you see the off-duty police on construction jobs, et cetera. We can administrate a few to offset their expenses. We have debt service refunding this past year. We saved like close to $250,000 on refinancing. We have small inter-local service agreements, traffic lights and geographic information systems. And we also have a strong internal audit departments to conduct the audits on our grants, checking for any usage, grants management again, overtime costs, and just visiting all different type of departments. Some of the action plans we discussed briefly, we'll discuss in a little bit. The non-uniform union contracts expire next June 30th. The negotiations will be starting in a couple of months. And we have to keep in mind that we do have a 2% tax levy cap, and the all future negotiations will be focusing on that 2% tax levy cap where you really can't exceed it going forward. So any increases are going to be in that neighborhood, probably below it, just to keep our, keep within the tax levy cap. July 1st, 2013, new contracts. The non-uniform employees will be required to pay a contribution for their health plans. Okay? Usually, it's a four-year step program. The first year, normally, it would be at the 1.5% of the salary. Then as a matrix, as they graduated the scale, that based on your salary and the classification of the health contribution, single family, parent, child, et cetera. There's a whole program that after like the fourth year, it'll be going up to like maybe 30% of someone's health benefits. So our current health plan is about for a family around $20,000. If you're years will be higher than that. So if you're looking at the people that are going to be paying in three or four years from now, close to $6,000, $7,000 for a family's plan.
30% of the premium.
30% of the hospitalization premium. Now, usually, that 30% is for people over $100,000 and so on. It's mostly going to affect the police and fire. And of the police and fire, we have currently about 100 with 25 to 30 years of service. Okay? So 30 years of service, you're at the 70% pension. And 2 plus 2, I mean, if you're going to be getting 70% of your pension, then otherwise, if you don't retire, you're going to be paying $6,000, $7,000 in healthcare benefits. You know, we expect a huge impact for police and fire. We expect the, we have about 84 non-uniform people at the present time, they'll probably live up to maybe 90 by next June. And again, with 25 years of service, and again, you know, they're going to be paying a few thousand after the first couple of years. So we expect an impact on employees also. And from the city's standpoint, it's somewhat of a benefit because we do have to stay within the 2% tax levy cap. So going forward, as expenses go up and everything, through attrition, this reduction in staff, okay, will help offset the increase, the cost, enable us to keep within the 2% cap. So it's going to be through attrition, and hopefully, there won't be any layoffs in the future. So any positions that are vacated, that are terminated through attrition, they're going to have to be a strong requirement for that position, and we'll just have to see how it plays out, who retires.
Want to just say the non-uniform would be getting...
Enjoy first. So we're going to have meetings, in fact, we have a meeting tomorrow with the non-uniform union reps. I put together a letter, four or five pages, that explains all our matrices, the contributions that are required, based on your salary, the type of health plan that you have, and so on. So people will be able to, we're going to give the unions a heads up first, they can talk their people. We're going to send out a letter, my letter, in another two weeks, to all the non-uniform people, employees, and just give them a heads up as to what's coming. You know, on any surprises, next July, when they get a small increase, you know, below the 2% to keep within the tax levy cap, plus they're going to have this contribution of, you know, 1.5% of their salary. The first year, that's what it is. But then it graduates, after the second, third, fourth year, goes up to already paying a percentage of your premium on hospitalization, so.
And then the uniform would be the following July?
Uniform's two years from last July. That would be 2014.
14.
Yeah, 2014. And as I mentioned, there's 100 police and fire that have 25 to 30 years of service right now. And we have about 80-plus for non-uniform. So, but again, it's, rather than layoffs through attrition, these people have the benefit of health plans for 25 years, and the city will be able to maintain its 2% tax levy cap discounts.
Yes, so somehow, if, say, for example, the uniform policemen and women, if they do retire, that's going to be a great reduction in our police and fire, you know, departments again, with our city continually to grow, you know, how are we going to be able to meet the demands of our, you know, of our citizens?
Well, we've already alerted Police Director, Fire Directors, and everybody's been aware of our multi-year plans, that type of thing. And they just have to start coming up with either different programs, shifts, et cetera. You've seen what's happened in Trenton, Patterson, Newark, they had all layoffs, hundreds, police and fire. We're not doing it. It's not our plan. Our plan is to have it through attrition, but we have to have different shifts, different policies implemented, and so on. It's going to be tough. We all live here, and it's not something we want to see done, but to keep within the 2% tax levy cap, that's what's going to have, there's going to have to be a reduction in force. And we don't anticipate any help from the state, from the feds, or anybody, you know. If you're going to have it from the feds, they usually give you like a three-year program, and then you have to pay for these police officers or firemen on your own. So that doesn't...
Councilman Keenan? Yeah. The, as our employees have to pay this premium, it's regrettable that they do, but it's a fact. That will offset the price that we pay overall for health benefits, correct?
Uh huh, oh yes.
Question, how much, have you analyzed how much that will be in the first couple of years?
No, right now, it's about, I think, a few hundred thousand for the police and fire. Police and fire...
Right.
Accepted the five-year contract years ago with a criteria that they take 1.5% of their salary for hospitalization contributions. So they're already contributing 1.5%, but that's based on a 2009 base pay.
Right.
So after five years, the base pay went up substantial, okay? So they're going to be paying 1.5% in the first year on their salary. And as I mentioned before, you got salaries of $90 million. So you can figure out 1.5% of that at, you talk about being at half.
But it's actually going to, it's actually going to be more than that.
Oh, as you go forward.
Five years from now.
Oh, as you go forward, it's going to be dramatic.
It's going to be a substantial piece of the...
Yeah, but the rates will go up too, so.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, but it's going to be, it's going to be substantial. But that's unfortunate, but that's, that's the world we live in now with the 2% cap. And of all the big cities, I think we've done a good job in avoiding layoffs.
Sure.
And with the plan is, with the surplus benefits that we've had over the last year or two, the different policies and plans, as I mentioned before, by administration and council, we're at this point where it's just going to be through attrition. But that's going to be a fact.
Councilor Grove?
I just want to piggyback on Councilwoman Perkins' comment, and I'm concerned also, our police force right now is 345, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, but public, yeah, 340, and I think firemen about 320. It's about 550, well, you got 550, 570.
So let's say we have 350 in police, and all 100 guys aside, or women, that they're leaving.
Oh, well then, yeah.
So now we're down to 245.
Well, that's not, that's not...
Good evening.
My concern is this, not so much that they're going to be replaced, because I know we can hire more police officers. My concern is you're losing 100 police officers with 25 years' experience. That you can't replace. So my suggestion, or my comment, I guess, to the administration is, maybe you can stagger the retirements so that, you know, they don't all retire at one time.
We don't expect them to retire at one time, but we'll find out.
But while they're going out, bring new guys in so they start learning from the guys with experience. Because if we lose 100 seasoned police officers, and even if we replace 150 rookies, they still don't have the experience of those 100 guys.
Right, well, that's why you have to remember, we had 40 police, yeah, 40 police and fire retire about a year ago with the buyout plan, with their things. They were replaced by 40...
Right, it wasn't such a drastic number.
Right, it wasn't a drastic number. We don't know what's going to happen. We'll start to get some feedback, I think, within a year from the police and fire.
I just think that has to be considered.
Oh, sure.
I know it's all dollars, and we all want to save money, but we also don't want to put guys on the street that have no idea what they're doing.
Yeah, yeah. It's got to be a staggered, as you said, plan, and we have to get some feedback from those with 25 and 30 years of services planning on retiring. Hopefully, we get some good feedback, some honest answers, because, you know, frankly, in most cases, it's just not going to make any sense as you get out there in years three, four. You know, for police and fire, they'll be contributing $7,000 for health contribution, you know? Yeah, working, 70% pension, and another 10% that you add on for health benefit payments that you don't have to make when you're retired.
You're working 20%.
And taxes, yeah, yeah.
You're working 20%.
Yeah. Less, you got to pay taxes, 20% in pension and all that stuff. So it's like, so points we'll take in where they're on alert, police and fire directors and administrators, and it's, you know, it's no secret that these contributions are coming down, but we wanted to give a heads up to the non-uniform. Because they haven't made any payments, and the police have been making a percentage payment to the last, yes, in 2009, 2010, 1.5% of their salaries.
So this is going to take effect really in June or July 1st?
July 1st with non-uniform. Right, it's not incorporated into this year's budget. We're fine for this year's budget, and hopefully, for next year also. I think we'll get through. But then going forward, we have to be very cognizant of that 2% tax levy cap, and frankly, it's going to be the savior.
You mentioned, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead.
You mentioned about revenue intake.
Uh huh.
How much revenue has increased in the last year or two, overall?
Well, taxes, that's our primary source of...
I know, but you, other than taxes, what else?
Well, as I mentioned, the hotel...
Hotel taxes.
Hotel parking, so on. Remember, we had zero a couple of years ago. Now we're up to about, I think it's a negative of about $5 million, I think, for all three together.
All together, yeah.
Yeah, the hotel parking and the motor vehicle tax. And they've only been implemented in the last, last few years, last couple of years.
What about our courts?
Courts?
Courts is about $4 million. I think we collected about $3.8 million, budgeted $3.8 million.
On the courts?
Yeah, we anticipate collecting about $4 million, $4.2 million. But we're also looking into a collection program where the, the taxpayers, those with the violations, have to pay a 22% penalty to have their funds collected. In other words, we'll be getting more revenue if we're having a collection agency look at it. They'll be collecting funds. That 22% is going to be paid by the violators, those with outstanding warrants.
So it's just like when you do the tax yield, it's 18%?
Yeah, right, right. So it's not going to be a cost to the city.
So it's just like an interest, a penalty for...
Yeah, penalty for those, so.
So have somebody else, somebody else will pay their fine, and then they'll collect it from the violator.
Yeah, yeah. Or then, they can pay. But, yeah, we're looking into that. We're also, again, looking into, you know, energy audits, and as I mentioned before, the EMS. We collect about $2 million, and we're trying to improve that system and do a lot more collecting.
I have a question about your EMS.
Yeah.
How much, you said that we're collecting 40% of what we're...
Yeah.
What do we owe? What is the total amount that's billable?
Well, we bill, well, we bill, well, close to $5 million a year.
$5 million?
Yeah, and we collect about $2.
Is there, do our EMS staff, do the ambulances go out with the Trinitas ambulances? Are there still cases where there are two ambulances going out?
Justify your point.
What do you, what do you, have you thought about ways of increasing that 40%?
Oh, yeah, sure, sure. And it's, again, through, I think, a collection policy, just that people are just going to have to want the money, insurance, and so on. They just, they're going to pay it, and the question is, the residents, they're usually older, poorer, they just don't...
Just don't have it.
And we'll see what happens with this collection agency, and we're looking into it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I just, Councilor Grove?
Mr. President, I just wanted to give you some suggestions. I know we do this every year, but a couple of revenue sources that I think we missed a boat on. Recycling enforcement, we don't do any of it. We just lost a gentleman, Alde Parati. Are we filling that spot? I mean, he generated more money, probably twice the amount of his salary.
Yeah, I just talked to John this afternoon, and they're working on a replacement. But it's going to be tough to replace, out there, he's doing new work at weekends.
I understand, so you bring two guys in. His salary was probably up there enough that you could probably afford two guys to do the work of one, and his job title could generate enough money, probably cover both their salaries and bring a profit. But I think recycling enforcement in this town, we just don't do it. And if you need to, and I think sometimes you have to spend money to make money, and I think if you hire some guys with this specific purpose of enforcing recycling, we could generate a big revenue for the city. In that same...
Well, when you say enforcement, I can talk to him about the fines.
Yeah, people don't recycle. We got, especially the big apartment buildings.
Yes, yeah, John's...
There's a lot of big apartment buildings in this town where the owners are not residents of this town. They don't recycle, and so their tenants don't recycle. And so therefore, this is extra garbage that we're paying for with tipping fees that we shouldn't have to.
According to John, Director of Public Works, he's looking at all the apartment buildings and as low as four-family homes. And they're also making a concerted effort, and we'll have this later on with the Board of Ed, they've been instructing the Board of Ed to either file their own recycling or have the city pick it up. So we're working with the Board of Ed and the larger...
I think there's more manpower needed there, is my point.
Yeah, right now, I have, I think, four in that department, four in the recycling.
Only two guys are inspectors.
Inspector, okay.
Only two, two guys.
Two, exactly, about both of them, yeah.
In that light, green energy, we talked about it on January 1st, the mayor mentioned about solar panels on public buildings. Have we gotten anywhere with that, do you know?
No, I don't.
Because a lot of big companies nowadays, they cut salaries and benefits to a certain point, but then the next alternative is cut utilities and overhead expense. And I think we should work towards cutting anything that we can in terms of utilities, be more efficient with our electricity and gas, heat, and also possibly put up the solar panels to cover some of our electrical bill. Last thing, actually, two more things. Quality of life enforcement. When we were out going door-to-door, a lot of complaints about noise, littering, drinking in public. Maybe hire either police officers to supplement our traffic bureau or another unit in the police department. I honestly believe that if strict enforcement is done on some of these violations, they will generate enough revenue to offset the salary and benefits of those persons, personnel.
The police chief has mentioned to me that that's one of his top priorities.
And then we were talking before about the fees that we've generated from...
Yeah, hotels, apartment...
The police fees.
Oh, the off-duty, the off-duty, yeah.
Can't we, is it possible that those fees could be raised for the police officers and for the city?
Well, you could look at the police officers.
Because we haven't done that, how many, how many years ago was...
But you have to recall, a lot of those fees, they go right to construction, they come right back to the city.
Right.
Construction, no, it's a cost to the city. It's built into the construction contracts.
Passed on to the city.
Passed on to the city in construction contracts. If you want to build up the fees, you could build up the fees, like say, for the retail... If you wanna build up the fees, you could build up the fees, like say for retail outfits like Ikea or...
We could, we could, but you raise the, you raise it on the, on the application fees or whatever it is. I mean, I don't want the city to lose money.
Right.
I'm just saying, raise it all across the board.
Yeah.
Because our officers are out there, they're doing their job, they're using our vehicles sometimes. I think the last time we set these scenes, it was probably about three years ago.
Yeah, I take a look at them every, every year or so, and basically, what you have to have is a break-even point.
Right.
You can't make money on it.
No, I know.
And you can't lose money, so we've got to...
Just to see if...
You know, oh, yeah, we'll take a look at that.
That's all I got.
I just have one more question.
Thank you.
You gotta be careful, Mr. President. Tony, three years ago, I think, Counselor Grover, and like longer, as I said, we were talking about open space tax, you remember, you call that?
Oh, yeah.
Remember that? We don't know if there's anything we can be dominant for revenue, trying to produce revenue.
Well, it's more taxes for the taxpayer.
Well, it's, it's an open...
The county's doing it.
County does.
County does.
Yeah, but it's not helping us.
Well, that's a good question, does the county give us any one?
The county will help us.
They're supposed to kick back to the towns.
Yeah, but we're not getting, we're not getting anything. I, I don't know, right?
Yeah, but the county, actually, the county raised the last couple of years, it's been low, so we haven't had any large impact on the county's taxes, anything it was. But, you know, we can check into it, but again, that's gonna be an impact on the taxpayer.
Because I believe, last time you and I was working on it, there was a city someplace, Tom, that was working on an open space tax, how they was modeling, you mean, how they was doing it. I'd like to see, we couldn't check around and see if...
Well, that's what we usually do, we like to go to a school on someone else's implemented and stuff like this.
Right, right. Take a look at it. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Well, let's come around at the lead.
Yeah, exactly.
You guys...
I'll do the same thing, yeah. While we're on the beat, I've got a hot minute.
Okay, any other, any other questions? No other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Segaro. Well, we'll now open the public speaking portion of the meeting since we didn't do it earlier. Any taxpayer resident wishing to address the budget at this time, we may do so.
I'm coming from the city. This is an election year, there's a conservative Republican governor, and there's one that wants to be president.
All right, any other taxpayer resident wishing to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I close the public speaker portion of the meeting. Motion to adjourn.
One more.
Move the second out, motion to adjourn.